Welcome to the July 23, 2015 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Housekeeping items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak and hand it to the secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we would ask if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silence. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting will not be disrupted. I would entertain a motion to approve the July 9, 2015 zoning board of adjustment needing Karen made the motion and Jan seconded the motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Item number two.
Thank you. Item number two is 15 VA 002, request for a variance to chapter 15 point, or 17.50.270. The other Rapid City municipal code to reduce the required number of off-street parking spaces on a property from 75 to 48. The applicant submitted plan showing, I'll start you with some slides here, get into this. As you can see, the property is currently zone general commercial district located south of the intersection of Omaha and East Boulevard. The planning commissioner viewed a conditional use permit for this property within the last year to allow casino on the property. And the casino comprises about 2,000 square foot of the, of the structures on the property. The property, the structure itself, however, is a 16,700 square foot building. The applicant is requesting this reduction in parking in order to be able to use the rest of the structure for any type of purpose. Based on the layout and the development on the site today, parking is legally non, there's a bunch of legally non-compliant parking on the property and as such can't be counted toward the official parking count. Air view of the properties, you can see, you've got parking on the west side of the structure and the east side of the structure. The applicant is proposing to pave all of the parking on the east side of the structure to make it legally complying. We should note here, too, that the applicant has secured an agreement with the railroad to provide additional parking and circulation on this area, south of the property, will provide additional parking and circulation to get to the back of the property. However, that parking, the applicant does not want the uses in the building to be affected by the lease agreement or any agreement that they might have with the railroad and as such has asked for this reduction in parking for the parking on the site only. Site plan, showing the structures on the property, the proposed parking spaces, they will be moving the parking that's located west of the structure to angled parking in order to meet all the circulation requirements there. And then they'll be providing the additional spaces in the back repaved and striped. I'll look at the facilities, you can see the Queen of Hearts Casino is located there on the left, but the balance of the building is largely vacant, or is vacant. I'll look at East Boulevard to the south and East Boulevard facing north. Look at the access to the parking lot on the west side of the property, as well as the railroad right-of-way located adjacent to the building on, on the right there. I'll look across the street, McKee Auto. The alley on the north side of the property, which is part of the access to the parking lot that's located rear of the building. Parking lot from the north on the west side of the building. This is the rear of the building. As you can see, there is a substantial space to allow parking. The applicant is proposing to pave and stripe this, as well as the, this portion rear of the building, which also provides circulation to that area in the railroad right-of-way, as we mentioned before. In reviewing this application, staff noted that the 16,700 square foot building is largely unusable at this time due to the inability to provide legally complying parking spaces. As such, we see that the strict application of the provisions of the zoning ordinance deny, does deny a reasonable use of the land at this time. The variance, the requested variances to allow to use the space with offices, retail, or commercial space, service shops, the applicant is available to answer additional questions regarding that if you do have them, but the uses for, or the variances for a use that's allowed on the property. The variance is the minimum adjustment needed for a reasonable use of the land. Any other adjustment would require demolition and loss of some beneficial use of the property at this time. And the applicant has gone through the trouble of securing alternate parking on the railroad right-of-way, just there's a concern that they would lose that parking sometime in the future, so they want to secure the use of the building through this variance today. The variance is in harmony with the purpose and the intent of the zoning ordinance. Parking regulations are set in place in order to provide efficient and safe parking for vehicles and pedestrians. The applicant is attempting to improve the conditions on the site, the parking conditions on the site through the use of this variance. They want to like repave and stripe the area, provide the adequate circulation aisles and provide alternative parking next to the railroad right-of-way. However, in order to be able to do that and get a beneficial use of the property, they are requesting this reduction. The, as we said before, the existing size of the building provides special conditions that are resulting in an unnecessary hardship. We should note that if the board should determine that there are, they should deny the request, the criteria and finding for denial are that there are no special conditions on the property at this time, which would, which are different from any conditions on any other property that would be zone general commercial district. However, as of this time, staff recommends that this request for a reduction in parking from 75 to 48 be approved based on the criteria noted in the staff report. The property owner is here to answer any questions you might have, and staff is available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is a good reuse of this, getting this property back into use is something that is needed. It's been sitting there for quite a while and now that the, the vacation of that right-of-way is, that's really helped that whole stretch and I assume there might be some others that come forward after this one. So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the variance. I think it's based on the fact that it's the minimum adjustment necessary for the use of the land and I would also include the stipulations. There's a couple stipulations in the, in the staff report and that would be part of my motion.
Karen made the motion and Jan seconded the motion to approve with the stipulations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Are there any other discussion items? I would entertain a motion to end the zoning board of adjustment meeting. Jan made the motion and Eric, it took me a minute, to second, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion adjourned. We will now commence with the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for July 23, 2015. And I will go through the housekeeping and other items. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. Cell phones and electronic devices, please continue to retain your cell phones or other electronic devices on, off, or silent mode. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting will not be disrupted. Consent calendar. Items one through eight have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed for the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commissioner, recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item three, 15 PD 018. Item four, 15 UR 013. The Rapid City Planning Commission actions on these items are final unless any party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the planning commission and development department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through eight staff would like removed?
Yes, Madam Chair, items three and five.
Any items planning commission members would like removed?
Eight.
I would entertain a motion for items.
Seven.
No.
Four and seven.
Four and seven. Oh, number five has been removed. So, four and seven and one. We already voted on that.
So, items two, three, five, six, and eight have been polled?
Yes.
And so is it your motion then to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Balance perfect. We'll approve the balance. All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, item number two.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item.
Same here, I need to abstain from this one as well.
I would entertain a motion for item number two. Jan moved and Andy seconded motion to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number three.
Item number three is an initial and final planned development to allow a 123-unit apartment complex. Take you through some slides, it's located on southeast corner, the intersection of Sandra Lane and Shelby Avenue, north of Katron Boulevard and west of Fifth Street. Property is owned medium-density residential district and office commercial district. Both those zoning districts support apartments. The reason this is a planned development is because there are five primary structures as part of this apartment complex. Currently, properties undeveloped, property to the east is a conservation area. We got, if we go back to the zoning, we have some low-density residential district two with townhomes to the north and some single-family homes in low-density residential district one. And as you can see, the medium-density and the office commercial are buffer between the lower-density residential and general commercial property located along East Stumer and Katron Boulevard to the south. Site plan. We have main structure here and four other apartment structures to the north and the south of it. You could see on, in this main structure, there's some parking on the first level, on the wings. And there are also detached garages located, six of them located throughout the property. Elevation, the applicant is requesting an exception to reduce, or to increase the height from 35, three stories or 35 feet to three stories and 36.5 feet. The one and a half feet requires an exception, it's a less than 20% increase in the height. And it's due to the peak, the pitch of the roof mainly. They're not asking for another story, they're, they're in compliance with the number of stories at three. And if we go back to site plan, we could see that Sandra Lane and Shelby Avenue provide some separation and they are meeting the setbacks required by the ordinance. We have landscaping plan, and here you can see the, a better view of the, the proposed Here we have sign package, monument sign proposed on the west side of the property. And then on the rest of this page, we have proposed gates and fencing for the dumpster locations, which are located between some of the detached garages. Looking basically from East Stumer Road, looking north, this bend in the road is towards the south end of the proposed apartment complex. Sign is posted in the property, it's looking from the northeast, looking south, or northwest, looking southeast into the property. Again, looking into the property and adjacent to the north and east. And looking east, and that's looking north, you can see the, the townhomes located north of the, the street. Believe this church located to the west. And this is looking towards the southwest at commercial development along Stumer Road. And in the distance there, you can see Katron Boulevard. And looking from north, looking south. Staff recommends that the exception be granted and that the initial and final planned development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. The applicant is here to answer any questions and staff is available for questions.
Andy.
I'll be abstaining from this item.
Entertained a motion. Motion's been made by Galen and seconded by Eric to approve. All those in, oh Karen?
I just had a question, is why this was polled?
This item was polled because there was an exception request and it shouldn't have been on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Item number four.
Number four was.
Oh, excuse me, we approved, number five. We have speaker requests from, forums.
Madam Chair, if we could take item number five and consider it in conjunction with item number 10, that will put us to item number nine right now on the regular agenda.
Okay.
If we can consider those two together, that would be great.
Okay. We polled item number six, too, so, so, yes.
Madam Chair, I think I pulled six, I'll be abstaining from that item.
So, what item do you want me to start with, please?
Item number nine.
Okay, we will go to item number nine. We do have a speaker request.
I'm sorry, number, excuse me, Madam Chair, my error. Item number eight also got polled, so let's take him in order. If we could hear on item number eight, whoever polled it?
I did.
We got, we didn't approve six, though, either.
And Andy abstained from that one, thank you.
Move to approve item six.
Okay, just a second. Eric moved and John seconded item number six to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
Madam Chair.
Yes, John.
I pulled this, just for clarification, this is an ordinance that moves consolidation, lot consolidation from a planning item to an administrative item? Not. And I didn't read the report clearly, I just wanted clarification before we voted.
When the ordinance was adopted, it allowed for previously platted lots or unplatted parcels to be considered for a lot line adjustment and/or consolidation plat. What we realized is in allowing unplatted balances, there were sometimes subdivision improvements that would otherwise be required and needed that were being avoided. When we saw that, that in some instances was actually being abused, we brought it to the attention of the city council and they concurred that we needed to do an ordinance amendment. They placed a moratorium immediately that unplatted balances could no longer be included in a lot line adjustment or consolidation plat. As a part of this ordinance amendment, it now puts it into the ordinance itself that says only previously platted lots may be considered as a part of a lot line adjustment or consolidation plat. Those are administrative and always have been administrative, and so the rest of it stays the same.
Thank you. Move approval.
John made the motion and Karen seconded the motion to approve item number eight. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any of them opposed? Motion passed. Item number nine.
Thank you. Item number nine is final number 15 PD 019, a final planned development to allow construction of mini storage units in the general commercial district. This file, or case came to you originally at the previous meeting on July 9. At the time, planning commission had some questions regarding the architectural features being proposed for the property, as well as some issues regarding the landscaping. Since that time, staff has worked closely with the applicant and, in resolving those issues. Allow me to go through the slides quickly and show you where the issues were at and what we've worked to achieve to clean up those concerns. Zoning of the property is general commercial district. Note the residential located the west and south of the property, which was the area of concern. Air view of the property, it's currently undeveloped. And just for a reminder, the city has purchased this property located east of, of the subject property with the intent of in the future, maybe someday, developing a fire station on the site. These were the elevations that you originally introduced to, I think the applicant agrees that they don't provide the architectural details that would allow you to make a clear decision. Site layout showing the landscaping buffer located along the, well, this would be actually the west side of the property. Since that time, the applicant has revised a letter of intent to include the installation of an irrigation system for the landscaping on the property in the hopes that the land, the irrigation system would allow these, the vegetation that's being proposed survive and thrive and provide the buffer that they are requesting. Signage, again, the parking layout. Applicant has submitted this architectural rendering of what they're proposing the storage units to look like. As you can see, there's brick cladding that would be locating, located along the north and south sides of the property, as well as, and I will allow the applicant to clarify whether or not they would be located on the east and west sides, on the door sides of the property or not. But, the brick cladding served to maintain the, the standards for the general commercial district and it is in compliance with the requirements of the Rapid City Municipal Code for storage units located in general commercial district. View of the site, sign posted on the property, they are doing some grading on the property today. Catherine Avenue looking towards the east and another view of the, the site. This was previous to the grading taking place. Based on the revisions, the work that staff has done with the applicant to try to improve the landscaping and the architectural features on the property, staff is recommending to approve the application with the revised stipulations noted, noted in the staff report. And the applicant is here to answer any questions and staff is available for questions at this
Karen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks, Rob, for following up on, on the questions that we had at the last meeting. I had concerns about the landscaping buffer and the fact that they're not. I had concerns about the landscaping buffer and the fact that they're not putting in huge trees, but at least they're irrigating those that are there, that does help. And the other issue that I really had was on the siding and what it was going to look like, and not be corrugated metal. And now that they're going to put brick in the north side and the south side, I'm satisfied with that. That does make it look a lot better, and it will blend in with the neighborhood a lot better. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this with a stipulation.
Karen made the motion, and Dennis seconded the motion to approve. We have a speaker request form. Do you want to speak, Tom?
Good morning. My name is Doyle Estes. I'm one of the three owners. My partners are Ben Fauzen and Lyndon Bolt, stand-up guys. These are two young guys that are getting involved in the business. They approached me about getting involved in developing storage units, and the land that we're talking about is some land that I owned earlier, and now they partnered up with me. And I appreciate Karen's concern. I listened to the video, Karen and John, of the meeting that we neglected to attend two weeks ago, so I apologize for that, too, as an oversight by our team. But I own the property immediately to the west, and I would not allow those earlier drawings to go in there, because I plan to put 60 or 80 apartments to the property immediately to the west. So I understand that, and I think this looks much better. What we might tweak that a bit, instead of putting that brick on the north and south, we might put some simulated wood stuff, so make it a little more warmer. But it'll obviously be much better than that single-line drawing that looked like grain bins that I built 50 years ago. And as to the growing of the hedges, I understand, Karen, and I agree, a lot of times you put the shrub in, and it doesn't grow, so that's why we're going to put the irrigation system along the west side there, so we can grow those little trees into larger trees, hopefully. Other than that, I was just here to be a speaker in case you had any questions, so I appreciate the cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. As noted previously, we're taking items five and 10 currently. Thank you. Item five is Fifteen RZ-014, a request to rezone property from medium-density residential district to high-density residential district. That's being taken in conjunction with item number Fifteen PD-020, which is a final plan development to allow medical and professional offices as a conditional use in the high-density residential district. A little history on this property, several years ago, the property owner proposed to rezone this property from medium-density residential district, as it is today, to office commercial district. During the course of that review, it was determined that that might not be the appropriate zoning district for the area. Today, the applicant, or the property is developed with a dental office, Dakota Smiles Dental Office. The applicant is proposing to relocate that facility, but would like to continue to use that small office, neighborhood-serving office use on the property. However, the medium-density residential district that it's owned today does not permit offices as a permitted nor a conditional use, and as such, the applicant has requested this, the rezone, where medical and professional offices are a conditional use in the high-density residential district. In association with that, the applicant has submitted this final plan development to allow medical and professional offices as a conditional use on the property. Essentially, there are no additions, expansions, or alterations that are being proposed to the existing structure today, and the rezone and the plan development are essentially to allow the same development that there is there today. The applicant is requesting two exceptions. The first is to reduce the required parking aisle on five of the parking spaces on the lot from 26 feet to 16 feet. The second is to increase the permitted amount of signage on the property from 24 square feet, or from the one square foot that would be permitted today to 24 square feet. Let me take you through some slides. As you can see, the zoning of the property, this is in an area that's residentially developed. However, Jackson Boulevard is a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. Area view of the property, you can see the parking lot out there in front of the structure between Jackson Boulevard and the primary structure. I'll have some photos later that show you that circulation aisle and what it's going to look like. A layout of the structure, as I mentioned previously, there are no alterations, additions, or expansions that are being proposed as a part of this development. Any expansion in use would require that a major amendment be brought forward, and you would see this application on this property again. This is a rendering of the sign that's located on the property, three-foot by eight-foot, for a total of 24-foot square foot sign. On a monopole, you'll see photos of what it looks like today in a moment. They are not proposing any alterations to this sign, it will remain where it's at, and same design. I would imagine that future businesses would change the sign face-out, but there are no alterations to the sign proposed. You can see photo of the property with the notification signs posted on Jackson Boulevard. You can see the existing sign as it is today, as well as the existing structure. Look at Jackson Boulevard to the east. First Avenue looking north, this is along the east side of the property, and Jackson Boulevard looking to the west. This is a view of the existing parking lot in front of the location, as you can see the circulation aisle there, not the 26 feet. However, based on the small, the small and neighborhood service-oriented businesses that the applicant has proposed in here, we feel that the limitations in the parking lot would be, are best served by a use such as this, where you're not going to have a lot of clientele or traffic moving in and off of, in and out of the property, so the parking can remain limited. It allows the, allows some maintenance of the residential character of the neighborhood. Another view from First Avenue looking to the west, to give you a greater sense of that circulation aisle as it exists today. View of the rear of the property, as you can see, it is asphalt today, and the landscaping or the hedge to the left indicates that this property is well buffered from the residential uses to the north and west by vegetation. So potential negative impacts of the commercial use in the surrounding residential neighborhood are being mitigated to the greatest extent that they can be. One more view of the property. Staff considered this application at length as to whether or not the increase in the intensity and density of use associated with the high-density residential district was appropriate for the neighborhood. Rapid City Comprehensive Plan shows this area as appropriate for urban neighborhood development, and the high-density residential district is a zoning district that would be permitted in such a land use designation. So the comprehensive plan does support the rezone of this property. In addition, Jackson Boulevard is a principal arterial street, and one of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to locate commercial uses along principal arterial streets. However, the high-density residential district is more suitable for this area than, say, an office commercial district, because the high-density residential district allows the residential character of the neighborhood to remain. And in doing, in allowing this use, this adaptive reuse of the property to remain on there, with the design as it is, we also have the opportunity to ensure that future development will remain with the residential and low, very low intensity commercial uses that exist there today. Essentially, this rezone and plan development are an attempt to allow what is there today to remain legally, and any increase, as I said, in the, any expansions, increases in the use which do not, are conditional in the high-density residential district, or that do not meet the requirements of the high-density residential district, will come forward to you again for your consideration as a major amendment to the plan development. So based on those reasons, staff recommends that this rezone and plan development be approved, the plan development with the stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Are there any questions? John? Yeah, I do have some, but I, I have some speaker requests.
Madam Chair, if I may, I should also note that, however, that the several residents in the neighborhood have contacted planning staff with some observations in opposition to this request, feeling that the increase in the intensity, the potential for the increase in the intensity of use associated with the high-density residential district may not be appropriate for the neighborhood. A couple of them are in attendance today. You have a handout on the dais with a letter of, or with a petition of opposition with a number of signatures on it for your consideration as well. Thank you.
That's what I, John? John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, before the folks come up and speak, what are the conditional uses in a high residency, small business, and what might be in there?
Give me one moment. So, Madam Chair?
Ricky?
Right now, the way that this plan development has come forward to allow for professional offices, it typically requires that that be a licensed individual. You would have a dentist, a doctor, an architect, an engineer, those kinds of things. It wouldn't allow retail, or those other types of uses that would be found in general commercial. And even though the applicant's family did attempt to rezone this years ago to office commercial, and that was denied, noting that it just opened up too many other options, and this did seem to be a nice compromise in that high-density residential secures and preserves the use of the site for residential purposes in the future, if the site should ever be developed. But it allows for the dental office to continue on the site, because right now it's legal non-conforming, and if the applicant should propose to sell it, right now she could only sell it to another dentist. She couldn't sell it to an engineer. And that's been very limiting for her, as she's had people look at the property. And so trying to find that compromise where we come up with a reasonable reuse of the site. In high-density residential, as in medium-density residential, group homes would be a conditional use, townhomes, and then microcell wireless communication facilities on buildings. It wouldn't allow for a pole, but if someone wanted to put an antenna on a building. There's not a lot of conditional uses in high-density residential. It's primarily residential, and then just a few conditional uses. The primary one we see in high-density residential would be a professional office.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Before the speakers, I have an additional question following John's. In a high-density residential area, this lot is pretty small, but how tall can that be? How many square feet? How, if it was going to go to residential, other than a townhouse or a house, if they put an apartment of some kind in there? I just want to know what the maximum density would be.
So, Madam Chair, the maximum density would be six units, which would require nine parking spaces, and that would be, also allow for a, in this case, seven-story or 65-foot-high building. Again, this isn't a plan development. You have several options before you today. The way that the stipulation is written is that if there were other uses permitted in high-density residential, it would require a minimal amendment to this, but it would just be a building permit. If it is your preference that, as you look very specifically at the request before you, you could indicate that any use other than a professional office would require a major amendment, so that the neighborhood would always have that opportunity to look at the site layout for future development.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, do you have any other question? Galen?
Thank you. Just one more question on the relevant cases. You mentioned that they tried to convert from medium-density to office commercial in the past. I guess I'm not seeing that on the project report here, but would we be allowed to revisit that? I guess in my mind, I view this as office commercial, and there's other, just a couple blocks down the road along Jackson, there are other properties that are zoned office commercial that are very similar properties in the same neighborhood, so I guess that would be my question, is can we revisit this as office commercial?
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, years ago, when they brought in that request to do office commercial, even though if you look just at a glimpse at our current zoning map, it does appear that there's some other office commercial zoning farther west and some farther east. But those are at corners of arterial intersections and other collector streets, where you do see that volume of traffic and other commercial uses adjacent to it. This truly is a node of residential that has had an existing dental office on the property for several years. This is a hard one for staff. We look at it, you know, it appears that the residential use is dominant in the area. How do we secure a reasonable reuse of this structure? Obviously, it's been converted from a residence to a medical facility for some time now, and knowing that the applicant is trying to put it on the market for others to purchase it, and secure that value of the property that she's vested as a dental office, this seemed to be a good compromise. Introducing high-density residential on this area with a plan development allows for that professional office, but it also limits it. If you were to rezone this to office commercial, it's very difficult to say no to all the other uses that would be allowed in office commercial, and several of them may have 24-hour services, other things that would have a negative impact on the neighborhood. When that came forward previously, and our apologies that it wasn't in the project plan, there was a petition presented to the Planning Commission, and again, at council. It was unanimously denied by the city council. Several people spoke against it, and I'm sure some of the same arguments are going to hear, even with high-density residential, were reflected as a part of that zoning application. This seems to secure a reasonable reuse of the site while still preserving the integrity of the neighborhood as primarily residential, with very limited office commercial, or professional office use only.
I have no further questions here. Okay, Kelly? Would you like to speak?
Could I go loud?
Sure. James Winkler?
Hi, my name is Jim Winkler, and I've been a 37-year resident of the Canyon Lake neighborhood, and seen many attempts over the years to change the complexion of our neighborhood through zoning requests, change requests. I've only had a very short time to even prepare for this, so forgive me if I'm a little bit disorganized. From what I just heard here, most of the steam has been taken out of what I was going to say, the points I was going to make were just brought up. My intent in taking the petition around was to make people aware of what might be possible with this zoning request change. This will be the first use of high-density residential in that neighborhood. As, I would like to, about all I can say beyond what has just been said, I decided to look into past changes of medium-density residential description, and over the last 15 years, that has changed considerably. People, when they buy their homes, assume that these uses will remain the same for forever, let's say. We all know that's not true, but it definitely brings up the disputes like this. I don't know how much high-density residential has changed over the years, since it's something I've never bothered looking into, but I make the assumption that changes have been made in that description. In looking at the conditional uses, of course, professional offices are included. That's, whether that has changed over the years, I guess I can't say, I have no prior records. In reading through the description, what really caught my eye, and which I doubt seriously whether very many- whether very many residents of that neighborhood know or realize are the height regulations. I doubt seriously, and Ms. Bloman asked about density, she didn't ask about height. Height regulations will allow up to seven stories or 65 feet in height. I doubt very many residents of the neighborhood know that is in the description. It's my intent to bring that to their attention so they have an opportunity to voice their I know that neighborhoods change, and I know that Ms. Lidle is not attempting to put in a seven-story building. But once this zoning is introduced into the neighborhood, it opens the door. It opens the door to high-rise retirement homes, I suppose, living centers. I'm not sure what all that would allow, but it would definitely, I guess, allow a seven-story professional office building. As I say, I don't see this in the immediate future. I don't know that I would ever see it in my lifetime, but it introduces the potential. All of the other questions were brought up before I came up here, so I guess that's about all I have to speak to at the moment. I just want to have the chance to bring this to the attention of our neighborhood and the residents' knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
I'm Kelly Lidle, and personally, I want to thank Vicky and let you know that she did a great job in trying to help us find a solution for this property. I've owned and been the sole occupant of that property for 16 years now. And thank you, Glenn, for bringing up the question about the office commercial rezoning. And I think it's important to note that when we talked about it being up for rezoning in the past, that's not the recent past. That was 20 years ago. So it's not something that happened five, six years ago, and much has changed since that time period about the nature of the major arterials in the city. And like you said, every other major arterial in Rapid City has a buffer zone between the residential and the main thoroughfare. So if you look at Sheridan Lake Road, which was recently developed, that has office commercial on the buffer. If you look at Highway 44 out to the airport. And so Jackson Boulevard has been a really, like you said, kind of a tough one for the city to decide what to do with because of that Canyon Lake district there. And I understand that. And I've been a good neighbor and complying with that for, actually, for, we've owned the property since 38 years in our family as a dental office. And it has been restrictive, and our hands have been tied in being able to do things and operating and changing a business with the changing of times. It's been difficult to do with the limited use on that property. So as my career is coming on the tail end, then I can't legally even lease space to another dentist in there to utilize that property well. So then I started looking at, well, my personal, or my professional goal is to have an integrative wellness center. Well, I can't bring a nurse practitioner or chiropractor in under the same building because the use and review and the conditional uses for one dentist. So that's been problematic. So in selling the building, then, I thought, okay, well, I'll move on. And seven years ago, I thought, well, if it's no longer serving as a dental office, I'll try to do what the neighbor did and put up in the, under MDR, putting up a multifamily apartment complex. And at that time, I hired an architect to do that, and they didn't feel like it was feasible that by the time you got demolition costs involved with removing what was on the property, that it wasn't the best and highest use for that land, that it would still be as a professional office if I could use it in that capacity. So then I tried to sell the building. And as Vicky said, my market is like that big because it's to one other dentist. I did send letters out to every dentist in the area as well as in the surrounding region, and I've got one inquiry. So that wasn't an option. And so now I'm trying to find what I can do with it. I went and talked with all the, with the neighbors that I could reach anyway, and I was able to contact on signature 15 of the neighbors that don't have any opposition to the rezoning. One of the persons who had signed Mr. Walker's has rescinded hers when she understood what it was. And really, there isn't an objection that I saw, even with the people in talking with James yesterday. It's not an objection to having professional use of that building. It's the what-ifs-down-the-road type of thing. That mix of the neighborhood is a combination of long-term residents that are, been in their homes, like Mr. Walker, for 38 years. There were some other residents, women that were 89, 90 years old, that have been in there similar. And of course, those, that's home for those people, and they don't want to see that neighborhood change. The rest of the neighborhood there, the majority of the residents there are income properties. They're already, they're rental properties that are occupied by tenants that come and go quite quickly. So as I scanned my list of the people that were there, three-quarters were tenants and renters, anywhere from one month in occupancy to a woman who had, you know, an average rental time of a couple years. So it is a mixed neighborhood. It is, you know, I respect trying to keep the residential feel of the old neighborhood, but the truth is, it's mostly rental income properties. It's not established homes like it was 50 years ago, where that was prime residential space in Rapid City. So what I'm asking for is you to support the rezoning into, I don't care what you call it, just so that it has some flexibility with the property in expanding the market for its sale, or its use inside of it to where it could allow multiple practitioners or professionals within the building. I think that's all I really want to say, other than I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jan?
This isn't a question. I'd like to move to approve with the additional stipulation that if the use changes from professional offices or over two stories in height, that it causes, it requires a major amendment and would come back here before it could be approved.
That did make me think of something, if I may please. I was surprised and kind of shocked, like, when I went and said, well, how about, let me cover the stairwell, so that I could, there's some stairs that go down to the basement on the east side. And so, well, let me cover that stairwell. And to find out that I would have to go through a planned development to get a building permit to make a minor architectural change to the building was also very restrictive. So, you know, this has been $25,000, $3,000 to even get this rezoned. And now the next person, let's say, do get it sold and they want to cover the stairwell, they're going to have to go through the same, this is a question. Are they going to have to go through the same thing? Are they going to have to apply for a planned development to get a building permit?
Based on discussion today, that there's a yes and no to that. So if you just kind of let us vet through and discuss out how this stipulation might be, we'll see what, how comfortable the Planning Commission is with some of the suggestions that Jan just brought forward. What I would suggest is that, and a point of clarity, the reason why Kelly couldn't get a building permit to cover the entry is because the existing parking is not designed in compliance with the parking regulations. The site today is legal nonconforming to use and to parking design. So she needed to go through that additional review, which you today are doing. The first stipulation in your staff report says that there is an exception being requested to reduce the access aisle width from 26 feet to 16 feet. If you grant that, then that won't be a limitation in the future. That would stay with the property. The third stipulation goes to the use. And what I'm hearing today, and because we have gotten a lot of discussion from the neighborhood, and we always appreciate when we see the property owners diligently work with the neighborhood, as we're seeing here today, and these folks take the time to come to the meeting and voice their concerns. That's what makes this process work. What we would suggest is that we revise stipulation number three to read something like this. The final plan development shall allow for medical and or professional offices to be allowed as a conditional use on the property. This shall not allow an urgent care facility. Any other use shall require a major amendment to the plan development. You might want to add something in there that also says, any structural design change that would increase the elevation beyond two stories shall also require a major amendment. So that would go to, you've got a two-story building that would otherwise be allowed. The use of the site is going to be dictated primarily due to the limitation of parking. There's only 11 spaces. That doesn't allow for a lot of use and/or apartment units if someone should come in the future to do that. Just a suggestion. Could I get some feedback from Planning Commission if that's something that they would support?
We have quite a few speaker requests, so, John?
I do have one other thing to say about the parking, if I may, and then, that the DOT, when in all this construction, also took away a curb cut onto First Avenue. So that's even limited that use even more, and it's good for the First Avenue neighbors, but it's, to me, it's like, that would be so unsafe, having everybody pull out into Jackson versus onto the side. But I just wanted you to be aware of that as well, that has been a restriction in there as well. And the building permit part, I guess I didn't get that answered, maybe it doesn't need to be answered right now. But I haven't recently applied for a building permit, just to clarify that. It was in the, again, that was 20 years ago in trying to make that building, modify it so it worked for us. But my understanding is, is that the next person, if they wanted to do any minor changes to the exterior of the building, again, tying, getting a building permit to a planned development with that cost and that cumbersome process, I think is unfair for that, to take that to that property. Thank you.
Vicky?
So, Madam Chair, to answer that question, and thank you, I didn't directly answer it. If the application is approved with the revised stipulations, as we just discussed, someone could buy this property, they could come in and propose to cover the stairwell, so long as they did not exceed the lot coverage that was allowed and met all setbacks and didn't ask for a building permit that would provide a use that now they don't have sufficient parking, it would just be getting a building permit. But if they were to want to expand beyond what the parking allowed or into a setback, it would be a major amendment.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. This neighborhood is rich in this community, and we've, since I've been on this commission, we've had several discussions of folks that have lived there for a long time. And protecting, as I would in my neighborhood and what you do in your neighborhood, I think has been a long discussion, as Vicky went through earlier. On the other hand, the fairness and justice thing comes out in the comprehensive plan, that a property that's been there for a long time and been a good neighbor needs to have some flexibility besides having only one buyer on the entire planet. Maybe we ought to provide something that allows reasonable use without undue hardship to the community. It's screened. And my comment is that we've handled the ability of seven stories. It's never going to happen. There's no parking. It's just not going to happen. But Jackson Boulevard's redevelopment is, once again, going to bring more of these discussions before us. There are going to be more property owners that are going to want to reach into that neighborhood and develop along Jackson. So I think, in my mind, because Dr. Lidle has been there for this period of time and been a good neighbor, that there is some standard to look to in approving the request today. And I hope that Mr. Winkler and the neighbors out there see this as a reasonable restriction as opposed to not having a planned development that would require further deliberation. So I don't know whether you have a motion, but I'm going to make a motion on item five. Are they together, or are they separate? Five separate?
Vicky?
The recommendation would be to approve the rezon in conjunction with the plan development. So potentially, if you're going to act to approve them both, do so, noting that with the revised stipulations as we discussed today.
I'm going to first ask Jan a question. Do you want John to make a motion or rescind your motion?
John, do you want to make a motion then?
So John's making a substitute motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
And my substitute motion would include the changes that were stated.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Winkler would like to take a moment to respond, if he could.
Certainly. And I do have some other people with questions. Yeah, we got the motion second, and John made the motion.
As I mentioned before, I'm not concerned about the application of this rezoning, particularly to Ms. Lidle's property. I'm concerned about the use of it throughout the neighborhood in the future. I don't agree that we'll never see a seven-story building there in that neighborhood. If it allows it, it can happen. What you may not know, I don't know, I have no idea, but if I am correct in stating, Ms. Lidle's family owns the whole end of the block. Am I correct?
No, I own...
I'm not speaking of what you own. I'm speaking of what is in your family and what can be sold as a complete unit.
No, I can tell you what I own.
I am next door to a new apartment building that was formerly owned by two dentists, who decided not to proceed with whatever their plans were years ago. In the meantime, it has been attempted to be rezoned to office commercial and finally settled on medium-density residential as an apartment building. Our intention in the neighborhood is to maintain a residential neighborhood. We feel that that's probably what saved our school, Canyon Lake, which was up for closure some years ago because of budgetary constrictions, I guess, and evidently, the numbers were down. It was an older neighborhood, but since then, that complexion has changed. In seeing what happened next door to me, I feel that Ms. Lidle also has that opportunity, that since the properties are in the family, that kind of thing can be settled or figured out or whatever. Another apartment building could be put in on the end of that block, as I see it, which we wouldn't be in disagreement for in the neighborhood. It's residential. We want families to stay in that neighborhood. We want to maintain its residential feel. It's, the school, we just recently got a church back, which had been changed over, which was a surprise to me recently. I didn't, I wasn't aware of it. I've been out of town for about a month. And I was glad to see that change back in towards a medium-density residential description. So I believe... So I, I believe that there is an alternative to the use of that property. It would have to undergo quite a change, just as it did next door to me. I guess that's all I wanted to add to what I had already said. Thank you.
Eric?
I, I was most concerned about the height issue because I, I mean, other properties can be added. If we limit the height to a major amendment, I think we've made our statement.
Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I seconded the motion so that we have something on the floor that we can actually discuss. I, I'm in a sort of agreement with the gentleman down here. I think the, the idea is to keep this property to fit, that something that fits in with the neighborhood. And right now, it kind of looks like a house. It, it, if somebody's driving by, other than the big sign that's out front, it does, at least it, the building has the appearance of being a residential, because it was a residence at one time. If something should happen down the road and there's a major fire, the building is destroyed, somebody has to put a new structure up there. And it's office per, it's an office professional setting. And somebody came in and said, okay, I'm going to have, as Kelly was talking about, the, the, um, a professional upstairs, a professional downstairs, I mean, more than one, so that it's, it's fully used and they can adjust that to whatever. My, my concern is what's going to happen in the future, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. And I think that the, keeping the heights to two stories, if it's a new building, that, that makes sense. I would like to see something that would blend in with the neighborhood if something should happen, and I don't know that that's something that we can stipulate through this process. And same with the sign. I would like to see the sign reduced, if that's a possibility. I don't want it to be a one-square-foot sign like high-density, but something that's maybe smaller at, at that point. So I don't know if we need additional, additional restrictions on this or not. I, I like the motion that, that says, what Vicky had said, so there's not a, not a urgent care type of situation where there's, there's several people that can come and go constantly in that neighborhood. And I, I just, I guess I don't know if there's any other restrictions that we need to put on there, but I think anything that, that can come back to the neighborhood that would allow them to have a, a say in what's going on, I think is important. Just because I suppose, because I live in a neighborhood that's got commercial, I'm, I'm very concerned about what happens in my neighborhood. And I think anybody else that has a commercial structure in their neighborhood would also feel the same way. So I guess I'm asking a question of you, Vicky. Is there anything else that we can put in there that would be restrictive to allow, allow something to come back? Not a building permit per se, but somebody wants to go in the basement of that structure and, and have a, a use down there. And I know this property has been dealt with over the years. I've, I've been part of that and, and understand the issues from the neighborhood and understand the issues from the Lidle family that owns it. But it does make a, another point, you know, if there's other land, whether, whoever owns it can be purchased on that rezone. Things can change in a neighborhood, but for this particular property, I think we're dealing with, I just want to make sure that I haven't missed something that, that can come back for the neighborhood to, to look at. So again, I'm sorry, Vicky, is, is there anything else that I'm missing?
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. The stipulation, as we discussed with the revisions, would allow for the professional offices and the medical use less the urgent care facility. The way the motion maker concurred with is, any other use is a major amendment. It would notice the neighborhood and come back before the Planning Commission. In addition to that, any change to the design of the structure that would attempt to increase the heights beyond two stories would also be a major amendment and come back to the Planning Commission. The area of the existing building, or let's say that was removed and a new building was, was placed, it'll be dictated by the parking. It's limited to a, a very small square footage because there's only room to get 11 spaces on the site. So it's about maxed out with development as it stands today.
One further question, and, and also, if, if that building was destroyed, the stipulation or the exception to have a 16-foot aisle would still be there? I mean, they could make it wider if they wanted to, but they could keep that 16-foot aisle, which would also decrease some of the traffic that would go in there, I would assume, so. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, excuse me, to follow up with Karen. Karen, you'd also noted that you wanted to see a revision to the sign, the stipulation number two regarding signage. Currently, there is a 24-square-foot sign on this property. The sign code, because this is a residential zoned property, even if it is rezoned to high-density residential, it would allow for one square foot. So does it, my understanding, Karen, that, that you would allow the existing sign to stay, but any new signage would need to have a maximum, not exceed a maximum square footage of?
12 square feet or something, something that's reasonable? That, that would suffice it. So at least you could sell the property and, and whoever moves in there can use that. But if that signage was to change to some other type of sign or, or whatever, you know, it got burned down and, and had to be replaced. I'd like to see that come back and, and so at least have the Planning Commission address that signage and, and whether that's appropriate for a residential neighborhood. So I would, I would offer that as an amendment to the motion to add that signage stipulation.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Lidle has a question.
Before we go to that, is the motion maker okay with that friendly amendment that Karen has put out to the sign stipulation, stipulation number two? That any future signage or new signage shall not exceed 12 square feet on the property? And the seconder?
I was the seconder.
Oh, very good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Vicky, what, what is the height requirement for an MDR?
The height requirement in MDR is three stories or 35 feet.
So why would you limit an HDR to less than what an MDR, which is what it currently is? That seems going the wrong direction.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
I believe that based on the discussion from the Planning Commission today, they are trying to find a compromise to allow this, this site to get rezoned, to allow limited commercial, yet trying to be respectful of the comments that have been brought forward from the area property owner wanting to maintain that standard residential feature. And I don't believe that there's many three-story homes in this area. I think they're all two-story or one-story. Is that correct, Planning Commission? You were just trying to reflect. Someone had said two-story, that's why I added it into the motion.
Well, again, I'm forward-thinking. I think it's important that you don't apply restrictions, that you're going to have to go and amend again because, and again, to, and all of Jackson Boulevard from this First Avenue or to Cent, Central Boulevard to up is all spot-zoned. So every individual place there that I look at anyway is, is spot-zoned according to their own thing. If you look in between me and Dr. Loftus's offices, I think there's 10 residences left that, Front Highway 44, that, that you're, we're talking about really, to put it in perspective here. And I, I don't know about you, I don't know who would want to live on, as a residence on, on a, a major arterial, but, and you had mentioned earlier that those others that had been given, like, what are, right across from Central Boulevard there, those used to be residences, and those were torn down and demolished and now have medical office space in them that are more than two-story or two?
Two.
Two? Okay. And then going up the other direction, you have the apartment complex there that's two-story. Is that correct? Okay. So my main question was that you would not, or, or ask you to consider is that you would not restrict this to more than what it is now, which is MDR. And if it's changing to HDR, I would assume that would incorporate everything that MDR would allow you to do as well.
I'm getting ready to call the question because I'm running out of useful time, but the, I guess, a couple of comments in my time on the Planning Commission. We've been through several neighborhoods that have had this very same issue, and it seems to be around dental offices. So in the past, it's been determined that a dental office is a good neighborhood use because we've seen it on Fifth Street, we've seen it in Wilson Park, we've seen it on Jackson Boulevard, we see it on Sheridan Lake. So I think historically, a neighborhood medical office building is a great, a great piece to, to, to quality of life. Spent a lot of time in that neighborhood. My aunt and uncle are 45-year residents of that neighborhood. And I know in my lifetime, it's going to change drastically from what it is today. And there's some, there's some solace in that for me. But, you know, I think really what this is, is we're trying to take a legal nonconforming property that was there before, there was such thing as legal nonconforming, and trying to find a way to accommodate the use and, and what's going on there. So I think this is good discussion. I think that we've done the best that we could to preserve the neighborhood, but also preserve the owner's rights. And I really agree with the motion that, that John and Karen have put forth. There's always going to be some restrictions and some give and take and some negotiating. And so most likely, two stories, nothing will be built bigger there than that than two stories. If somebody wants to go back to three stories, I'm fine with that too, but I think it's time to move it forward here.
Any other comments? John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in concurrence with Andy that we've, based on previous discussion in this discussion, we're probably ready to vote. But I just wanted to mention one final thing. Since the completion of the comprehensive plan, and this neighborhood was one of the specific areas that was covered in there, it notes that this discussion was going to take place, that there was going to be, everything that's in this pretty much conforms to a two-year-long process that this community went through. So I'm ready to vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Here's what I, if you can correct what I think's in the motion. I think that, that we should not allow an urgent use situation, and it's limited to two-story, and that the signage they have now remains. Is there anything else that I'm missing in the motion?
The signage stipulation would read that the existing signage shall remain, but any new signage or additional signage shall not exceed 12 square feet in total.
And that, okay, if, if any new signage would not exceed 12 square feet.
In addition, on the use stipulation, that any other use besides the medical or professional office as proposed by the applicant would require a major amendment to the plan development.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Item number 11.
Item 11 is an ordinance to promote historic preservation. This was before you at your second June meeting, and it was continued at that time to allow time for Planning Commission members to meet with Historic Preservation Commission members and staff to further discuss the ordinance. Just a quick summary of the ordinance to refresh your memory. The ordinance moves historic preservation into Title 17 in preparation for future passage of historic preservation overlay zoning districts in the future. It makes, adopts some provisions related to the Historic Preservation Commission, makes a, a small change to the membership of the HPC. Instead of a seven-member board with two alternates, it would have a six-member board with two alternates and pull those six members from three different constituencies. The ordinance codifies the review procedures for historic projects. And finally, it adopts a provision related to demolition by neglect. At the, last week, we had that joint meeting. Several of you were there, as were several of the staff, and, and three Historic Preservation Commission members and one, one citizen in support of historic preservation. Some changes were made to the ordinance as a result of that meeting. The version that I emailed you reflected those changes. There was good discussion at the meeting. I feel like it was a good oper, it was a lengthy meeting, was a good chance for everybody to kind of air out some, some matters. I, I think it's safe to say that the, there, there remains a difference of opinion related to the involvement of the HPC in all of the historic preservation review procedures, and that difference probably remains today. But the ordinance wasn't changed in any way to, to, from what was before you previously related to the review procedures. I'll let Sarah share on just a couple different topics too.
I guess, good morning. There are three other matters and topics that came up at the special meeting that I just wanted to go over the answers that we found, too. First, how other commu, a few other communities facilitate their 11-1 reviews. Second, how the ordinance relates to the comprehensive plan and its goals and policies. And third, a demonstration on how the environs of the historic district are applied by staff when we're working with applicants. So first, Ted Spencer is the Executive Director of Historic Preservation for the State Historic Preservation Office, and he submitted a letter in support of the ordinance, noting that this process will align Rapid City with the majority of other cities in the state who effectively administer their 11-1 reviews. So this raised the question as to how some other communities do conduct their reviews. I reached out to Brookings, Huron, and Sioux Falls and got responses from Brookings and Huron. Within the last year, Brookings has been working on revising their process. They were also under an MOU similar to Rapid City. They have in the last year decided to eliminate their MOU as well and direct their reviews over to staff and SHPO and having the HPC involved in a case report review. And their HPC in turn then is focusing their efforts more on their education, outreach, and other programming. Huron, I spoke with their staff liaison for historic preservation. He indicated that for the most part, the, their historic preservation reviews most all projects. There are a limited number of things that he is able to review administratively with the assistance of the SHPO. The Huron Historic Preservation Commission reviews typically less than five cases per year. Their community is much smaller, and so is their historic district. And lastly, Sioux Falls, I wasn't able to get ahold of anyone on their staff there, but I did review a number of minutes from, and agendas from previous meetings over the last year or so. And it appears as though their Historic Preservation Commission does review all of their projects in the public hearing format. So second, on to the comprehensive plan. There are two areas in the comprehensive plan that address historic preservation goals. One is in the zoning diagnosis and the other is in the core values. The zoning diagnosis discusses improving the quality of development, and it has three recommendations regarding historic preservation. First, clarification and further analysis of historic preservation regulations and processes to balance economic development and historic preservation goals. Second, it recommends that review processes for historic preservation be incorporated into the development regu, regulations. And third, it recommends that demolition by neglect be explored more thoroughly. As to the core values, under the livable, vibrant community core value, the comprehensive plan aims to protect the city's cultural, environmental, and historic resources through updates to the preservation plan, survey and inventory, and public outreach. So overall, we find that the comprehensive plan supports the ordinance by first acting on the issues in the zoning ordinance, in the zoning diagnosis, and then shifting the role of the HPC more towards its other programming activities. And the last question was clarification on how the city review, looks at the environs. So I'm just going to bring up the tool we use, Rapid Map. This is our mapping, our mapping tool that we use with the public and for internal use. The layers that are currently turned on in the map are the historic, the historic layers. I'll show you how this works. The red area here is the historic district boundary. When you turn on this layer, you see this yellow area around it. This is a buffer that's programmed to show 50 feet beyond the historic district boundary. So here, we can zoom over a property to see whether or not it is located in the historic district or with, or if a port- district or with, or if a portion of the property is in, within the environs of the historic district. So hopefully, this helps clarify a little bit how we're able to visualize this as we're looking at applications and reviewing the potential for adverse effect on a property based on its location relative to the historic district. And I can answer any questions that you might have about how we use this tool.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Sarah, for bringing this in. I actually brought up that because after reading the proposed ordinance and I thought the language was different. And this may have been the map that I saw some previous years ago. But my question runs to that 50 feet adjacent in the environs. And what happens in the environs? What, what happens 50 feet from the border?
In terms of scope of work that we might be reviewing, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, what about property owners that are in the environs? How does that affect what goes on in decision-making inside the boundary?
If you are proposing work in the environs, the only scope of work that requires a review is if you're going to demolish a building, build a new building up from an empty lot, or make a really substantial addition in terms of construction to a building. So those types of projects are reviewed in the environs. What's not reviewed in the environs, if you're changing your roofing material, if you're changing your roof form, if you're changing your siding, or making any alterations to the windows, those types of projects are not reviewed.
So if your property is partially in the environs and partially out, are you in?
Yes. If the, if the environs, if the boundary of the environs extends over to your property, then...
So even if you were going to do something that was not in the environs, but because the pro-- your property extends into the environs, I, I'm curious about the environs in the map, and that's why I asked that it be brought up. Our business lays adjacent to the environs, and I'm not sure that, I'm not in it now, where I wasn't, my understanding was I wasn't before.
Well, the, the boundaries of the environs in the historic district are not changing. So, as, the status of your property wouldn't have changed as, as part of this ordinance. And as to the portion, the portion of the property or the property itself.
Well, remember, the historic preservation review that occurs is will this project, or will what's going to happen in the environments damage, encroach upon, or destroy historic property? So it's really looking at if this project across the street will affect the historic district. And my boss, Joel, likes to use the example, if you're going to put a 12-story high-rise across from the most historic building in Rapid City, yeah, maybe it will encroach upon the historic property. But the nature of the review is, is based on a recognition that probably what happens across the street isn't going to damage the historic property that's within the district. So, the environs gives us a chance to look at those 12-story high-rises if it were to occur and, and get involved at that level. But the nature of the review in a, in a normal case, when you're putting in a different window or putting on an addition, and you're outside of the district but within the environs, the likelihood that it would reach the level of damaging or encroaching upon the historic property that's across the street is pretty limited. So that's the nature of the review. I just wanted to clarify that.
Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In, in another response to, to John, in the past, when we've had a structure that part was in the environs and part of it was not. For example, the library, part of that building is in the environs of the property across the street. And they wanted to do some, something that, in the section that was not in the environs, and it was a minor, something minor, they weren't tearing down the building, obviously, and, and doing anything like that. And that was considered, you know, non-adverse effect because it's, it really didn't affect anything. But because they were in the environs, we had a chance to look at it at least, and, and they came forward and said what they were doing, and we went, that's okay. To me, that's going to be one of those things that is on that list of items that either don't need review, or if they need review, it would be non-adverse to start with and wouldn't have to go through the, the process. That's my understanding. Once they come in for a building permit, Sarah would look at that and say, this is not going to affect anything, and it would just get a building permit. So, that's it. My questions for now, I guess, are comment.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and I'm not too concerned about what Karen said. I, I think that's the way that it's always, it's always operated. What, I just want to make sure that our definition is good because I just asked 50 feet, but my property may be 200 feet by the time I get. But because 25 feet of it's in the environs, the other 125 feet automatically get pulled in. So, that map is not accurate, and then I have an issue. So, within 50 feet is, I, I don't know how there's another way to say it. I understand there needs to be a review. My intent is not to build something adjacent to a historic structure or look for that. But I also don't want the people that are not in the district to be restricted in the future and, and require an additional level of citizen, uh, interaction with the city or the historic district to be driven by a, a definition that isn't 50 feet. It might be much more than that. I, I don't know whether I'm saying that correctly, and I, and I don't have language to propose differently than the 50-foot. So, I've just wasted two minutes of my time and yours. I apologize.
I do have a speaker request for him, so. Bill? If you'd come forward and... You'd give your name and address, please.
My name is Bill Kesloff. I live in the historic district, 1015 12th Street. I've been actively engaged in preservation for 10-plus years. I've served on the state law review committee. And I'm here to encourage you to reject the ordinance that's before you now. You know, it's, it's been the intent of this city to streamline some of the boards. But this is a board that you cannot streamline. This is, what we have with Preservation Commission is legislatively mandated. And you can't take a legislatively mandated situation and try to streamline it. This city requested an opinion from the Attorney General on how 11.1 review process should take place. That was submitted to the city. The existing ordinance that you have before you does not follow that Attorney General's opinion. It circumvents many of the legalese. And so what I've submitted to you today is an alternative draft to the ordinance that's been submitted by the city. Now, this draft was drafted by someone who is an attorney, someone who used to serve on the Preservation Commission and chaired the commission for many years, a very capable individual. He's also our legal counsel for historic Rapid City. So a very, very learned individual on the subject matter of all the legalese. This ordinance does not cover all those legal ramifications and all the issues that are addressed in the Attorney General's opinion. And that's, that's really my concern. I'm here as an unselfish person who really cares a lot about protecting our historic downtown and protecting all the investments of over 900 people in the West Boulevard Historic District. I'm also a past chairman of the West Boulevard Historic District. The city would have you believe that this streamlines the process and makes it easier for the applicant. It does not do that. It is convoluted. What we're suggesting is that, first of all, it dismantles 2.68 and wants to incorporate this new ordinance. 2.68 has been working for this city since 1975. It's been very effective, and that's a reason that we have what we have today. It dismantles the Preservation Commission and puts it way down low on a totem pole to where it no longer reviews applications. It only reviews when there's a case report mandated. To put all these decisions in the hands of an inexperienced planning department, okay, is wrong. And to take away a public body is wrong. It, it, it puts the Preservation Commission down to a public board that only gets involved primarily with education goals. Doesn't allow them to do the reviews that they've been doing since 1975 and very effectively. Basically, what the new draft is suggesting, that covers all the legalese and covers all the Attorney General's opinion statements, is an applicant comes in, sits down with planning, they fill out the application, it goes to the Preservation Commission for a review, then it goes to SHPO, which is required by law, and, and back here to the city. A very simple, non-convoluted process that has worked for years. This new ordinance doesn't work that way at all. And I, I might add that the person that wrote this new draft was a recipient of the Governor's Award 11 years ago. And also, my wife, Jeanne Kesloff, just received the Governor's Award for preservation. So, I, I mention that because there's a lot of integrity here, and I don't want to see that process eliminated. You know, this new ordinance, on the very front page, it says it's going to strengthen citizen boards. It does just the opposite. It doesn't strengthen citizen boards at all. It takes it away. It wants to, it wants to mandate, it says in there, subsequent expansion of Rapid City downtown area, we don't know what's going to happen with the expansion of downtown. It may or may not happen. There may not be a buy-in as far as expanding downtown Rapid City, historic downtown. The way that, the way the system works is that the National Park Service created the Preservation Act in 1966. And it codified in federal law that these are the treatments that must be applied. Now, for a state to, and then the MPS gives the state 10%, okay, of a budget. That budget then goes into grant money. To apply for that grant money, you must maintain a CLG status. Now, we, we are a CLG, and, and Preservation Commission has survived on this grant money all these years. This ordinance could jeopardize our ability to apply for that grant money. And in the packet, you'll see all the, all the reasons why. So you, we must ask ourselves as a city, what are, what are the benefits of this change in the ordinance? There are no, there are no benefits the way this ordinance is now being presented. I would like to see our legal department talk to the person who drafted this, this new ordinance that I'm submitting to you today for consideration, and go over the Attorney General's opinion to make sure as a city that we have all the legalese covered because now we don't. So, I would encourage us as a city not to move too quickly on this and approve this addition to the ordinance the way it's now, it's now drafted. There are some good things in this new ordinance. The demolition by neglect clause, I think, is a real good addition. And there's some other good things in it. But for the most part, it circumvents the law because it doesn't address, if we implement it the way it is now, and planning unilaterally makes administrative decisions, then it circumvents the law and the intent of the law because it doesn't consider prudent and alternative and feasible alternatives. Those are the things that we want to prevent from happening. So I think a lot more, and I really appreciate this board taking your time and, and hearing and, and listening to this because it is a very, very, very important issue for a city. And I don't want to see us rush into an ordinance that doesn't cover all the legalese, and it does not. Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, have expressed some concerns about the ordinance in the, and, in the past on, in different occasions. But there are some things in, in this ordinance that I think are also very good, and I, I appreciate that. I wish, Bill, that if you were going to give us something to look at, that we had that before us, be, you know, because we don't know what you've got in that ordinance, and it's a little difficult for us to make a decision today without knowing what's there. The questions, or not questions, maybe, the concerns I have that I've addressed in the past was the number of members. And I don't know if that, that this ordinance will change anything, or if it'll help or not. But I think that the membership is small, and that does have, be, have some concerns for me. The amount of money that it's going to take to do some education has some concerns for me. And I know Brett said he would present that to the city council, although the budget is going through now, so I don't know that that'll be part of the budget this year. But in the past, the only money that we've actually gotten for historic preservation has been through grants. And sometimes they're, they're $10,000 grants, sometimes they've been more. But I know when we did the guid-- the West Boulevard Historic Guidance booklet, and I can't remember what we called it in the end, that, we had to do in a three-year grant program because we didn't have enough money to do a, a complete document. There, there was not enough grant money that came through the state, so we had to put that off in three years. We did get almost through that, but then I, I left, so I don't know what happened. But apparently, it didn't go, go to the final, final stage, which is kind of discouraging because that is, that document would help all the people on West Boulevard. That's an educational tool that they could use to say, here's what my house looks like, and here's, here's some of the things that are important in that house. And sometimes people just don't know because they are, they're not historic preservationists. So, the other thing is, other cities, and I appreciate Sarah going out to, to look for other cities, most of the cities that, that don't do 11-1 reviews, to some extent, are smaller cities. I was concerned about Sioux Falls, and, and the fact that Sioux Falls still does what we've done in the past tells me something that, you know, maybe... done in the past tells me something that, you know, maybe this decision that we're going to make is not pure. I mean, it's got some issues with it. One of the questions that we talked about also was, what is the role of historic preservation, the commission itself? And I know in the past, we've had some real difficult decisions to make through, the Historic Preservation Commission has had some real difficult decisions to make, and part of that was because it was a public forum. There were people from the neighborhood that actually came to those meetings and expressed their concern about what was going to happen with the structure, and I can't remember the exact reasons why they were there, because that was a while ago, but I know that that is open to the public, and there have been public people or people from the public that have come and sat in on those commission meetings to give their input, and that helps, helped the commission make decisions, and it helped, because then the state also knew that there was some concern from the public about whatever was happening. In this role, the majority of the 11-1 reviews that come through are not going to be an adverse effect. There's a lot of them that will go through that Sarah could say is non-adverse through the 11-1 review process at the state level, and those are going to come through with that list that we don't have in front of us today. But once that list is provided, that, to me, would give a lot of comfort to the people from historic preservation. They'll know that these are items that are not needed to go through that long process. And I think that's an important part, that should be part of this. I think we should see that, so give some comfort to the Historic Preservation Commission and to us who are up here, that we know that properties are going to be preserved, but not necessarily needed to go through that 11-1 review process. The main thing, I think, that I have concerns about with this ordinance is the fact that the 11-1 review process goes to the state. It eliminates going through Historic Preservation Commission at the initial stage, which, in some cases, is not all bad. But when there's something that Sarah believes is an adverse effect, it goes to the state, then the state comes back, and if they agree, then it goes back to the Historic Preservation Commission for their input through a case report. That seems like it's kind of coming in the back door. I would like to see those issues, and I understand since January, there's only been one, so it's not a huge amount of those 11-1 reviews. But something that, if there's an adverse effect that Sarah believes is an adverse effect, and even if it goes to the state and they say, yes, it is, I'd like to see the input from the public, from Historic Preservation Commission, and anybody else in the public that has some concerns about what's happening with that property. So if they're going to add on something to the front of a building, and Sarah says that's probably an adverse effect, I think Historic Preservation Commission members, who are supposed to be professionals according to the law, and that's part of the deal, that they have to be architects or have some professional status, that can say, here's some ideas, here's what we should do, try something different, and maybe it won't have to go through the whole process of going to the state and back to the commission and then back to the state, and the state still says, yes, it is, and then it has to go through the city council. I think there's a way that you can stop some of that. That would help the property owner by getting some of that input from, whether it's the public or from those professionals on the commission, and that wouldn't have to be every one of them, but just those that are considered to be adverse at the very beginning stage, and that's something that Sarah could find out. I'd like to see that added to this ordinance, and that would be, I think, a way that Historic Preservation Commission members can still have some input at the beginning, rather than at the end of the process, and it would also eliminate the ordinance through the other things that are in there. It would eliminate some of those routine things that are going to be non-adverse, that can be handled through Sarah's office and through the Historic Preservation Office up here. And I think that would save the Historic Preservation Commission members from being perceived as somebody that's got this heavy hand over whatever anybody can do. It allows those things that are more routine and more non-adverse to go through a similar, shorter process, something that's simple, and will give the Historic Preservation Commission members the ability to look at things that are considered adverse and have some input before it goes through the entire process. So that's my comments. I think in all, that would be the one change that I would like to see in the ordinance, is to add that one piece, and that's my comments for now, and I'll listen to anybody else's comments.
Madam Chair.
I make a motion to extend the meeting beyond nine o'clock.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor of extending the meeting past nine o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Certainly want to acknowledge the time and effort and thought that this community, and Bill and Jean, especially for your service on this, which I hope continues. Karen, who, you know, did historic when she worked for the city and has a long engagement with it, I just want to find, you know, that we're able to, as a community, come together. So I'm a little concerned when, you know, the opinion that Mr. Kessloff referred to says, you know, we need to attend to those. And after our meeting the other day, I tried to research that the best I could, and I think we are attending to that. But what I want to address first is this letter from the South Dakota State Historical Society, SHPO, that was referred to earlier in the comments. This letter was sent to the city April 14th of this year, and I'm not going to read the whole letter, but this is when I got done with all the discussions, all of the comments, the people that are at the head of this for our state, and notwithstanding how well it's been managed here, it says this. The first point I'll make is, "The process will better serve the consumer." I think we have some evidence of that, as we've operated without the memorandum of understanding since January, and those processes, notwithstanding the details, which I'm not fully familiar with, seems to have worked, and this ordinance, to my understanding, is helping. "Citizens will receive faster permits in many of the undertakings that have no potential to adversely affect," comments that Karen made. "The process places the appropriate amount of decision-making authority with the city planning staff." The state historical board says that. So I have to think that they're seeing those moves, not only in South Dakota, but other places. This is an interesting comment that SHPO made. "Digital tools now help SHPO and city staff answer questions and evaluate potential adverse effects in a more timely manner, making preliminary reviews by the commission unnecessary in most cases." So they understand the burden of the past in saying, "Technology has moved us forward on this. We're making good decisions." Finally, the point in the letter, in the very first sentence, "The South Dakota State Historic Preservation Office would like to express its support for the city's proposed ordinance change restructuring of its review process for South Dakota 19A 11-1," which is the 11-1 review that was spoken to. So that is their comment and their opinion, and they're the people that take care of this for the state. So notwithstanding Karen's concern, I share a little bit that the Preservation Commission ought to weigh in somewhere closer on that in the early process where there is adverse effect. I don't know how to solve that today, so I'm going to be supporting the ordinance as it comes forward today, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to move that the ordinance go as approved, and you see on your screens.
The motion was submitted and seconded to approve the ordinance as written. We have one more speaker request form. Jean.
Thank you for letting me speak. Jeanne Kessloff, 1015 12th Street. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my experience with historic preservation. When we first purchased our house, and this is being an example of why having a diverse group and having applications go through the Preservation Commission is a benefit. When we first purchased our house, we wanted to build a garage. We got permission to build a garage. It was going to be set way back, a normal two-car garage. We were in the historic district, so we had to go through the Preservation Commission. This was my first experience with the commission. And one of the commissioners was an architect, Fred Thurston, came over to the house, which at that time, they were allowed to do, come over to the house before ex parte kicked in, came over to the house and looked at the property, looked at where the garage was going to be put, and he said, "If we connect the house to the garage, we can grandfather the garage and even with the house." It was a concept that nobody had even thought of. My husband and myself had not thought of that. It's an absolutely awesome setup, and if we have one person reviewing the applications, those sorts of things are not going to happen. Another example is a house on the Boulevard where they wanted, it was a very small, narrow house, they wanted to put an addition onto the back, which is fine. The addition was fine, not an adverse effect, but it created such a long-looking house. We had, again, another person on the commission that had experience in additions, and said, "Why don't you just kind of kick out the side a little bit, and it will just give a little bit of an architectural style to the house, again, won't be an adverse effect, but it eliminates that house from just being a great big, huge, long house." So having that expertise on the commission at the get-go is really important, because you get that little bit, architectural details, in keeping with the style of the house, engineers that can help you with stuff like that, and that's the importance of a Preservation Commission. Those items were non-adverse effects, but having that little extra help increased, I know, my house and increased this house on West Boulevard immensely. As for other towns in South Dakota not having a Preservation Commission, some of those towns don't have enough people with experience to set on a Preservation Commission, architects, engineers, window experts. So they do have to rely on city staff to do that. And I will say that Deadwood Historic Preservation Commission reviews all of the 11-1, even down to some sort of a fan on the side of a building, of a non-contributing building. That's how much their Historic Preservation Commission is included in their decisions. Thank you.
Karen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The motion that's on the floor at this point is to approve the ordinance as it's in its final draft, and I want to let folks know that I'm going to not support that for two reasons, and one reason is I would like to explore the idea of having the Historic Preservation Commission included in some of those adverse effects earlier on, as I mentioned, and I'd like to see if that's a possibility of adding to this ordinance. And the second reason is, I would also like to see that list of those things that are going to be considered non-adverse, that Sarah can just readily send to SHPO if it's needed to do that, or give them a building permit, something like that, so that we and Historic Preservation Commission members can see that these would truly not be an adverse effect in the historic district. So for those two reasons, I'm going to vote no on the motion on the floor.
Bill, if you have something new to add, because we did listen very intently, and just to let you know.
I know, Madam Chair, thank you, and I'll be very, very brief, but if you approve the ordinance as it is submitted right now, you approve the new composition of the Preservation Commission, and in my packet there, you'll see a recommendation, okay? And again, it violates the intent of the law. The breakdown now is inappropriate, and it doesn't give true representation for the different fields of engineering, law, construction, et cetera, et cetera. So to approve this ordinance as a whole would be approving part of that composition that's in there, John, okay?
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Vicky.
Just for clarification, to the Planning Commission, you have some choices before you this morning. You could approve the ordinance as presented to you by staff. You could continue the ordinance to a date-specific Planning Commission meeting, requesting staff to bring forward the additional information, Karen, that you identified, or you could deny the request. You have a motion on the floor to approve. You could entertain a substitute motion.
Eric.
Question for you, Vicky. I assume this goes to the city council after us. Am I correct on that? As Karen mentioned, not having a chance to react to the packet you brought, Bill, what you say about legal issues does concern me, but I guess I feel comfortable that in the meantime, from here to the city council, that the city's attorney, staff, Carla, her cohorts will have a chance to review and, I guess, take note of those issues. I'd just suggest that that happens. I think personally, what John brought out from that SHPO letter is something that I read and noted, and I place a lot of emphasis on in this and considering this, and also the first six months of the year, watching us go through this, or not watching personally, but seeing that we've gone through a very similar, if not nearly exact, method of dealing with this since the MOU expired, and I feel that we're ready to try something new. I think this is a good stab at it, and I'm comfortable moving ahead.
Carla.
I just wanted to respond to what Eric said. You know, in drafting this ordinance, we looked at state law, we looked at state regulations regarding historic preservation, we looked at the CLG guidelines, we looked at how other jurisdictions in the state do this. We looked at this very carefully, and I felt comfortable with the legal status of the ordinance as proposed with the review process. I would never bring anything forward that I felt like was contrary to what the spirit or the words or the intent of the law is, and I feel comfortable with this from a legal perspective. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Dennis has called for the question. We have a couple of speaker requests for him yet. Karen.
I don't want to belabor the points that I've already made, and I'm sensing that the Planning Commission is, at least some of the speakers have said, they're really willing to go forward with the ordinance as it is, and you've heard my opposition. I don't know if the Planning Commission is willing to continue this for another, one more session, just to allow us to look at the two items that I brought up. My question, I guess, to Carla is, how long will it take to put that list together of items that would be non-adverse?
Well, we have a draft of the resolution, but I think it's fair to say that there's probably going to be some substantial changes to that. The ordinance says that that resolution of items that could be approved by staff only needs to go before the Historic Preservation Commission and be approved by council, and so that's going to involve that additional review, if it comes forward now or if it comes forward in a month or two, behind the ordinance. So there will be that additional look. It won't come before the Planning Commission unless you would want It won't come before the Planning Commission unless you would want that to occur, but, but per the ordinance, it would go to the HPC and then be approved by council, as well as approved by SHIPO, so that's a process that would take place probably down the road.
Okay, can I also ask you about the other comment that I had, as far as adding some level of review for Historic Preservation Commission members on those items that would be considered adverse? Is there a way to put that in the ordinance, or, or do you think that you wouldn't want to do that?
Well, it's not in the ordinance today, and I think staff wants to move forward with this, as it's written today. It certainly could be added, but nobody's directed me to do that, but I, I think we, you know, that's, that's something that could be added if, if we were told to do so.
Okay. Well, I was going to make a motion to continue this, but I'm not going to do that, because I don't know that there's enough support up here to do that. We'll see how this vote goes, but I, I, I still would like to see that added, you know, some level of, of review for those folks who are, for those items that are going to be considered adverse, so I think that, that having a public forum of some kind, so that there are people on, on either side, that might have an, an opinion on that, or some suggestions on that, and sometimes you might not get, because of the number of, of members that are going to be on the commission, there might not be all the professional people that are there, but somebody like a Fred Thurston can come into a public meeting and say, here's an idea, that, that might work better, or, I, I just think there's, there's a way that the public should be allowed that opportunity, and as this ordinance is written, it, it's not going to do that unless somebody comes back through that case report, which is then down the road, and, and, and for the applicant that's doing that, it'd be a lot easier to do that right up front, and get that, that moving along, and so for that reason, I think it would be a good thing to add to this, this ordinance, so I'm still going to vote no on the proposed motion.
Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Carla, if you could just address this, just for clarification, this, once it passes the Planning Commission today, or some other date in the future, it, it then goes through four readings, doesn't it? It goes before legal and finance, city council, and then goes before legal and finance and city council for a second reading? So it still has four more readings to go through?
Yes, yes, council will, or legal and finance will see it twice, council will see it twice as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I just want to make one comment, and I apologize for the extra time, but I know myself, and I'm very aware of other members on the commission, no, we don't visit because of ex parte, but I go out and review all of the sites before all of the meetings. I'm very committed to my duties on the Planning Commission, as well are the other members I'm very aware of, and so I just want you to know, we do take this responsibility extremely seriously, and we try to represent the whole community, and I appreciate so much when people come forward and comment, because it adds to the depth of how important this is. Thank you. Okay, I'll bring the motion for, I'm sorry, I just had to say that. The motion's been made to approve. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed. Any discussion items? If not, I'd entertain a motion to, yep.
I just have one, one comment on this ordinance thing. In the, in our items that we are looking at, it says ordinance clean version, that is not a clean version, so I, if you're going to forward this on to the city council, you might want to do that. The, the one that says ordinance clean version is the one that has all the mistakes in it that, Carla, that we talked about on page six, and so if you want to have a clean ordinance without that in there, you might want to change that. You bet.
Thank you, Karen. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go.
Dennis made the motion, and Jan seconded the motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, meeting adjourned.